Good evening and thank you all for joining us for the February 6, 2018, meeting of the Buncombe County Commission. Let us begin the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise and join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As we come together for our county commission meeting this evening, we are just a few days away from the start of the 2018 Winter Olympics, which will be held in Pyeongchang, South Korea. Whether you are a fan of the Winter Olympic sports or not, let us all take time to reflect on the purpose and the spirit of this historic gathering of talented and dedicated young people from across the world, to compete in their respective athletic fields while also promoting international cooperation and peaceful relations. In that same spirit, before we begin the business of our meeting this evening, let us have a moment of silence during which time people may offer a silent prayer or reflect on what we all can do as individuals to promote understanding and cooperation within our own diverse community here in Buncombe County. Please join me in a moment of silence. And also before we begin the meeting this evening, I would like to acknowledge that we have with us this evening Representative Brian Turner, one of Buncombe County's three representatives in the North Carolina House of Representatives. Representative Turner, thank you for your service to us in our state Capitol and thank you for being with us this evening. I would also like to give a few moments to County Commissioner Robert Presley to make an announcement.
I think it's coming up. Our newest member of Buncombe County residents, born this morning, my granddaughter, Avery Rose Presley. And all of this is, I'm just so proud, my fourth one. Is this one of the reasons why I want to be a county commissioner? Is this is the future and this is what I'm working for? And thank y'all for allowing me to say that.
Congratulations, Mr. President.
You just went on Instagram.
All right. And thank you for being with us. If you have a cellphone, please mute it or turn it off. I'm going to read the ethics reminder to the board. "In accordance with the Code of Ethics adopted by the Board, all county commissioners have a duty to obey all applicable laws regarding official actions, to uphold the integrity and independence of the office, to avoid impropriety in the exercise of official duties, to faithfully perform the duties of the office, and to conduct the affairs of the governing Board in an open and public manner. Is there an item on the agenda, the outcome of which will have a direct, substantial, and readily identifiable financial impact for any Board member? Also, does any Board member have a financial interest in any public contract coming before the Board today? There being none, all Board members have a duty and obligation to vote on any matters that are voted on by the Board this evening." One item I neglected to mention when I reviewed the agenda is that following the discussion around Board appointments, we will take public comment on any matter. So anyone may speak to the county commission at that time about any matters that have not been previously, had a public comment session on them earlier in the meeting. And you'll have three minutes to address the Board at that time. Any public issues that are voted on by the Board will also have a separate public comment period for them when we take those matters up. All right. Let's move on to the consent agenda. And Commissioner Belcher requested that we get a little bit of additional information on the Article 46 Schools Tax Capital Fund project ordinances related to AB Tech. So who could share some additional info with us on that item?
Greg Azreals here, if you might stick him up.
Greg, as you come up, what's in the report is on the Elm building, so you might just talk about what we're doing, what we're doing there on the Elm building. But for the public, for the public, it's in the consent agenda and they can see all the detail. I just wanted to give them a little more information.
I really didn't come with the presentation, so ask questions and I'll answer them. But as far as Elm goes, we have $150,000 in that request, and that is to take care of some water intrusion issues. We're sealing the fluted block, doing some roof work, and trying to control the humidity in that building. And if you've been in it, you know it has a certain odor. We're trying to overcome that and just dry it out, basically, to preserve it until decisions is made on what to do with the Elm building. The other part of that capital request, originally, AB Tech brought you a budget of $1.5 million for a specific list of improvements to be made. It was handed to me and I took it out and I used a professional estimator and a design team. And we came back with a budget amount of $3.9 million. So that 2.4 million that's in there, it's requested, that is to basically compete the list that was originally given to me.
May I say something? I've worked with Greg on this and Robert Presley and Al Hunt side. We've, as commissioners, been on the Board. Greg's put a good deal together with us and we've had three trustees involved, Marianne Rice, Joe Brummett, and what's the other one? One more. What's the other one that I had? Can't think. Matt Kern, right. We're going to try, all the commissioners, I want to tell all the commissioners that sometime first of next month, I want to try to get all of you in together, plus all the trustees. Then Greg can, I've talked to him and he can put something together that we all can see, everything that's happened in far as what's going to happen at AB Tech. And, you know, right now, what he has planned is pretty awesome. All of us don't know exactly what's going on, but I want everybody to understand that AB Tech's going to be brought up to a great standard. And that's what we're looking for with the quarter cent sales tax.
Very good.
That was good, Greg. Thank you. And thank you, Greg.
All right. Well, thank you. And I appreciate the request to talk about it a little bit more. This is, it's important to take care of the buildings we have. It's a lot of times we focus on the new buildings that we're working on and they get a lot of attention, but it's really important to take care of what we got. So really appreciate everyone's work to put this together. All right. Any other questions about the consent agenda? If not, we need a motion to approve.
So moved.
All right. We have a motion, a second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. All right. Next item is the WNC Diversity Engagement Coalition. Paulina, now's your chance. Thank you for being here.
Thank you so much for having us. Like, this is my crew of people? Yeah, I'm so happy that everyone is here. But my name is Paulina Mendez and I am the new Communications and Community Engagement Coordinator for the county, so going in on week two. But for the past couple of years, I had the privilege of being the program coordinator for the WNC Diversity Engagement Coalition. For those of you who may not be familiar with the WNC Diversity Engagement Coalition, we are a network of organizations dedicated to increasing diversity, equity, and inclusion, and we bring people together to collectively support the professional development, engagement, and inclusion of multicultural people in our community. So I do want to extend my gratitude to all of you for investing in us and in turn, investing in your employees for the county. One of the ways that, one of the programs that we have is our eight-week professional development series. And it's a lot of hard work. It's a lot of relationship building and a lot of professional development. And I'm so excited to report that out of all, all of the Buncombe County employees that participated in the program graduated. And I have some of the graduates with me today, so I'd like to take a moment to recognize everyone. We've got Alex McKnight, George Hanna, Renata Conyers, Michelle Nelson, Dameska Thompson, Eric Barnes, Michelle Warren, Nadine Walker, and Sheila Hardy. I can't tell you how proud I am of all of them and how much they mean to me, but I do want to turn it over and let Alex and George say a few words.
Good evening. I just wanted to take some time out to thank the commissioners, Lisa Eby, Paula Mendez, everyone who is involved with this program. I think I speak for myself and my classmates when I say this program's taught me many skills that I can use both in my professional life as well as personal. It's also made me more valuable as a Buncombe County employee, to better serve the citizens, and also allowed us to create some, some relationships with other Buncombe County employees and Buncombe County resources that we might not have ever created on our own. So I just wanted to say thank you again.
I'm George Hanna, and like Alex said, I thank you for giving us this opportunity. It was a special opportunity. We formed a sort of friendship. It was almost like a team-building exercise that I'm not sure it was meant to be that. You know, it was more to teach us the diversity and we, Alex and I have become friends since then, Eric and I have become friends since then, and I think all the rest of us, you know, we, we sat in the room and we talked about these, in the class, we called them uncomfortable conversations because we were talking about diversity, but when I sat down and thought about it, they were actually comfortable conversations in an uncomfortable topic, I guess, is to me a better way to say it, because I was comfortable with everyone that I was talking to. We kind of built, built up to it maybe throughout the classes, would everyone agree? Maybe unintentionally, or maybe it was intentional, maybe Paulina did this on purpose. But we, we got to a place and it was easy to talk about these things that most people don't want to talk about because they, they're taboo or they're whatever the case may be. And doing these classes helped us get to that point. And we talked about things that I think we can bring back to the county and make us better employees. But I also met department employees that I never would have met otherwise. Usually, I'm an IT guy, so I'm usually going in and fixing things and then getting out of the room. And that's, that's not establishing relationships, that's just putting out a fire and moving on to the next fire. So these are folks that I'll be able to, next time I go to their desk, we'll be able to have a conversation about friends and family and what's going on in your life. And I think that'll help us carry on as better employees as we go forward. And I'm going to meet new people through them that they know better in their departments, and they'll do the same thing with IT. And I think we'll also look at each other differently. Doesn't matter what color we are, doesn't matter what gender we are, it doesn't, none of those things matter. We're here as a team, and I think that's what this class brought us together to do. So that's it.
Thank you so much. I'm happy to be under good news.
Thank you.
Thanks so much. Congratulations to all of you. All right. The next item on our agenda is a public hearing to consider a resolution regarding capital costs of school improvements and extension of deed of trust. And Tim Flora will kick it off.
Thank you Chairman Newman, Vice Chair, Commissioners. Tonight, we are, is the, if we can get that presentation. Yep, there we go. So tonight, we're going to begin the process of financing some school capital projects that you as a Board have approved over the last three years. These are projects that have been recommended by the School Capital Fund Commission as part of the Article 39 Sales Tax Revenue Financing, or Sales Tax Revenue Projects that we have going out here. You have been, you have approved projects since 2016 to the, and in 2016, 2017, and 2018, and you've approved the funding for these projects. And we have been successfully, successfully have been able to use cash flow from that fund to pay for these projects. But we've gotten to the point where it's now time to go out to the markets to finance these projects. And so we stretched that cash flow as long, as far as we could. It has always been the plan since the beginning of this process that in order to stretch those dollars to meet all the capital needs of the, the local schools, that, that we were going to have to finance these projects. And so tonight is sort of the beginning of that process. And so with me tonight, I have Ty Welford, who is Senior Vice President with Davenport. They are our financial advisors that the, the county has used for the last couple of years, and people that we have relied upon to help us work through this process, to make sure that our processes and procedures are as they should be, and that we are making good, solid financial decisions in how we are moving forward with managing the cash flows and the funds from this fund. The issuance that we're, we'll be going at, we're going out to the capital market, and so the projects that we'll be funding are about $60 million worth of, again, previously approved projects. And so here's just sort of a summary of some of the bigger projects. It's the Asheville High Project that, that we've talked to you many times before about the Community High School, the Montfort North Star Academy Project, and then sort of a sundry of other projects, LED replacements, some sustainability projects, and then roofing and other sundry projects. And so Ty is going to sort of walk you through the process to help you, give you and the public sort of a better understanding of how, all the, all the different working components of this. And then we will be available to answer any questions that you might have following his presentation.
Make sure I have this down. Thank you, Tim, and thank you to the commission for letting me be here today. As Tim said, my colleagues and I have been working with the county for the past couple of years and really focused in, in the past year, looking at capital projects and specifically on these school projects, making sure we had our ducks in a row, we had the planning process in place to go to the market and issue bonds to, to fund the projects that we're ready to spend. I'm going to give a overview of the process we're going to go through, the schedule. Certainly would welcome any questions as we go through it. On page three here, some of the key items for the anticipated sale. We are anticipating issuing limited obligation bonds, which has been the county's historic method of issuing debt in the public markets. The, the specifics are that we will be issuing under the county's 2015 deed of trust, which was created to sell the 2015 limited obligation bonds. We are adding additional collateral to that package, since we'll be adding debt to finance these projects. The specific collateral here will be the Montfort North Star Academy and the Asheville High School. The, some of the key details of the issuance are listed in the next bullet. We are issuing via public sale, and I'll spend a minute talking about that on the next slide. Our issuance date is pegged for March of 2018. We'll be pricing in mid-March and closing by the end of March, which is when the funds will be available. The term of our issuance is 20 years. We've provided on the right-hand side of this slide, an estimated amortization of the principal amount of the bonds we'll be issuing. This is just an estimate. It'll move all the way up until we lock in our rates in mid-March. I will note that the estimated par amount here of 54.555 million is less than the project amount. That does not mean we're going to be getting less money than we need. It's purely a function of the public markets, and our current estimates assume we would be getting a slight premium for selling those bonds based off of investor preferences. So we will get the 60 million we need. We will be issuing a lesser par amount in order to accomplish that. And finally, on this bottom-left-hand corner of the slide, we've listed the financing participants. We're working as the financial advisor, bond counsel Parker Poe will be covering the legal documents and legal approvals. I should note, which we'll cover in a minute as well, but tonight's really the first step in the process, the public hearing. The February 20th meeting that you all have will be the real action from the county board standpoint of approving the financing. So it's a two-step process in this approach. The underwriting team will be led by RW Baird. Wells Fargo will be co-manager, their counsel Maguire Woods, and trustee Regent Bank. Just spend a minute about method of sale considerations. The two major avenues that were analyzed for this financing were a public offering versus a bank loan. And certainly, there is a place for both methods. In this case, for what we are anticipating issuing, the key determining factors that steer us towards a public sale are really the size, the term, the collateral structure, and then lastly, the interest rate. The interest rate is kind of based off of these other factors. The size, I'll just note, you know, we're going to be in the 50 to 60 million dollar issuance range. Certainly, it can be difficult to get that amount of funding from a single bank. They tend to like smaller amounts. It's not to say that there isn't a bank willing to do that, but it's a smaller universe of banks that would be willing to fund that size of a loan. The term, we're looking for a 20-year fixed rate, once again. There are banks willing to go out 20 years with a fixed rate. It's a smaller universe of banks, so it's not as good a fit with what we're trying to accomplish here. The collateral, we talked about a little bit. We're doing, we're utilizing a collateral package, which works well in the public markets. Banks tend to like a single piece of collateral, and they don't like sharing collateral typically. And then the interest rate, I'll just note, we've had some very recent similar type of financings that we've reached out to our broad universe of banks, state, national, and regional banks. And based off of what we've seen for a 20-year fixed rate of project amount in this size, the bank rates just have not been as efficient as the public market. The two data points we've seen in the last month, the bank, the best bank rates we've seen, one was 50 basis points worse than the public market estimate, the other was 100 basis points. And just to put that in perspective, with this loan, that would translate into depending 50 to 100 basis points, somewhere to the tune of 2.7 million to about five point, or 2.8 to about 5.6 million of total additional payments you'd be making with that sort of a markup. So these factors have all steered us towards the public sale, which we feel pretty strongly will give us the best result. This next slide is really just for informational purposes. I just wanted to note the county was upgraded to AAA by Moody's in the winter of 2016. So you now have AAA ratings from both Moody's and S&amp;P. Some folks like to ask, well, what's the benefit of that AAA? We've put some information together on this slide. The answer is it's a moving target. It depends on the market that day. But certainly, since the financial crisis in 2008, investors have put a premium on credit quality. And so the difference between, say, a AAA and a AA credit rating, the average spread there has been 23 basis points since 2008. And so like I talked about on the previous slide, that would translate, 10 basis points is about 570,000 of additional payments, 20 basis points is double that. So just trying to give you a little bit of a framework there for the benefit of having that AAA rating. And then lastly, a summary schedule here that Tim alluded to. One key step in the debt issuance process in North Carolina that I know you all are familiar with is the local government commission has to approve any debt financing, certainly of this magnitude. And that is a process that we've already started. It, it runs a parallel track with you all's approval process. We submitted an application to the LGC at the beginning of this month. We had a discussion with them. Based off LGC staff, they've given us the go-ahead to proceed. LGC is meeting on March 6th to consider approval of this financing. So the key steps we have is the public hearing today, the approval on February 20th, the LGC approval on March 6th. We'll be getting credit ratings along the process, and all of that will come together to allow us to access the public markets in mid-March and close on the financing by the end of March. So happy to entertain any questions that you might have.
So I just got a, just a comment. So there are a couple of reasons why, and you said this, I'm repeating, I guess some of, some of what you said, just to nail it down, when you go to, when you go to the public market, these are very good performing loans, so investors want them, right?
That's correct.
So because the risk is lower than the interest rate that the taxpayer is paying is less.
That's correct.
And so because they are large in scale, 60 million, we're not able to reach out to the local banks for those. But on lower amounts, we may be able to, and they, you know, may be just as competitive as the public market. But in this size of a, of a, of an offering, you know, we have to go to the public market. But I also want to say that the detail on this is, is very good, Tim, and I appreciate the, bringing in the extra help to explain it. It does, it does help quite a bit. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I have one thing to say, it's not really a question. What, what you're speaking about is Article 36 money. That's money that comes out of our seven cents sales tax, and then it's not anymore tied into our property tax. Some people make-
Right. This is Article 39 sales tax. And by, by law, it is, it is specific to school capital funding. And so that flows through the School Capital Fund Commission, which then makes the recommendations based upon need from the two school systems to you, the county commissioners, and then you ultimately approve the projects that are recommended to you. But yes, it is a dedicated revenue stream. It is outside of the general fund. It's, it's its own specific fund. Correct.
I have one question. Could you say just a little bit more, I'm going to do a little bit more detail about what collateral and security the county offers as, for the loan repayment?
Sure.
The bond repayment?
So the, the structure of this financing is not too dissimilar from a mortgage, your home mortgage, where when you go to take a loan, you have the collateral to support the loan. And you need to have a certain level of collateral to get a certain dollar amount in your loan. In this stance, and it's fairly common in, in the public markets, there's a package of collateral and we, that, that is already existing, that was created in 2015 when that financing was done. And so the collateral was sufficient to support the financing at that time. Given we are borrowing more, and it's efficient to do it under the same package, we need to add some additional collateral to that so that the, the, the ratio makes sense. And I'll note, specific in North Carolina especially, you can't just pledge any collateral. You need to be financing improvements to that in order to pledge it. And so in this case, we're doing fairly substantial improvements to Asheville High and to Montford, and so that's one of the reasons it's-
So it's the, it's the real estate on which the buildings sit that we're, that we're making the improvements to, or building the buildings on? It's that specific real estate?
It's, it is. The buildings are already there. You're enhancing it or modifying, improving those facilities.
Okay. So it's just the, the collateral is real estate. Is the Article 39 revenue also collateral?
The revenue is not. That is how you all specifically pay for it, and you've identified it for your budgetary purposes. The, you effectively have a promise to pay the debt service associated with the bonds. It's, it's called a subject to appropriation pledge, and I'm, I'm not a lawyer, so I, I'm not going to portray that I know all the specifics, but- not a lawyer, so I'm not going to portray that I know all the specifics. But you are obligated to put it in your budget every year and to determine if, you know, those payments are made as part of the budget process every year.
Good. Thank you. Right. So, we're not going to vote on this this evening, but we're going to have a public hearing. So, I'd like to go ahead and open the public hearing at five-thirty-three. Are there any members of the public who would like to comment during the public hearing?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Glad you got to see me again.
Yep, me too.
Smile. I mean, it's a good time. You're talking about money. Wells Fargo, I heard mentioned. They've been in the news more than any bank I know of for things that are not appropriate. So, make sure you check into that. Whatever it is that they got their name on, you make sure that you're checking that out. Article thirty-nine sales tax, hey, it's been around here in Buncombe County for years. It's the only one in the state that's designated for this kind of money. And I think we have used it to the guilt, and we need to be going the other way, you know? We used to be the dilapidated dozen. Now, we're the forty, almost fifty buildings in Buncombe County and the city of Asheville. Now, that look like mansions, not dilapidated. So, there's a piece here that you need to hear. This is not just about brick and mortar. We have done this for twenty years, brick and mortar. The education of our children are suffering. They're having to go out into charter schools and other parochial schools and other homeschools to get an education. So, I'm bringing this point up because education is supposed to be one of the priority things, and brick and mortar should be secondary to that. Buncombe County's got enough brick and mortar. We need to educate. Now, the bond rating, I don't know why we're up here talking about bond rating. My gosh, we're proficient in getting money. The sales tax, if it goes down on Article thirty-nine for, if it come to a bad time, where we going to get our money to pay that bill? Is it going to be out of property tax? So, that would be a question I'd like to ask. Would sales tax that go to revert to it if the sales tax wasn't there to pay that bill? Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Anyone else?
All right. Close the public hearing at five-thirty-five. And
Have a comment, Chairman?
Sure.
Just to the point on the question about sales tax, it probably wouldn't be bad at some point in time to just have a historical information on sales tax to show, you know, through recessionary periods and such, you know, what it, what it looks like, you know, and the growth. And it wouldn't be a bad thing to have in the future at some point in time.
And I will speak to that because actually, next Monday is our next School, School Capital Fund Commission meeting, and that is actually something we will be looking at is modeling that same, modeling through a recession to see what, what that would, what impact that would have on our, our financing.
Yeah, I think it'd just be good to, you know, at some point in a commission meeting just to show the historical data on, on sales tax.
Sure.
Also, schedule for your work session next week.
There you go.
Way ahead of me. Thank you.
All right. And then the other question that, that was asked is, so, the plan is to repay this using the Article thirty-nine funding, but what if the funds were not sufficient to do that? The county is committing to repay these funds. So, we would drop on other financial resources in the event to
I think we would be, we would be obligated to, yes. But I, I think really, what, what we're doing in this situation is, we have been using fund balance out of that fund to cash flow this. Now, we're going to, once, once we do this financing, we're going to reimburse ourselves the money that we've been using from the reserve. So, there will be, there will always be a cushion. Now, you know, the, so, if the economy takes, you know, a downward turn, I think we, we were able to sustain ourselves through those issues. Now, what it, what it may impact would be future decisions that the School Capital Fund Commission may make on future projects. But I think probably, as, as, as far as the existing projects that we have already funded, I think we would be secure in maintaining those, those payments.
So, we would look to the general fund, to the fund balance during those?
Well, no. We, what, what, the likelihood would happen is that we would cut back on the amount of projects that we would award in the future. I really think that the way we have been modeling it and what, what we're looking at is that the, the fund itself, the School Capital Commission fund itself would be able to
Okay.
sustain any, any hits in the economy in the, in the foreseeable future.
Right. Just during, if we were, if we went into a bad recession, during that period, we may not be able to take on new projects
Right. Yes.
because we would need the revenue to focus on paying down the debt.
Got it.
Was it, in 2009, that was a great recession. How was it affected?
So, in 2009, we didn't have the setup that we have now with the School Capital Fund Commission. It was just funds were allocated
Right.
by average daily membership to the, to the different schools. And so, it, it was done in a completely different
But the sales tax was still maintained?
The sales tax was maintained, but the schools had better, the, the schools had control of the projects that they were
Right. But the, the income from the sales tax didn't go down because of, I mean, they were still able to carry on.
Oh, oh, I see what you're saying. I, it, we would have to look. I mean, we did take, we, we did take a hit. It wasn't significant, but we did take a hit on
It's part of the historical data
That's right.
You'll see too, Steve. But I will say, and that's a policy decision that you'll be revisiting too, Steve. We're very conservative in estimating growth in sales tax for some of those reasons, too.
The, talking about bringing the money back in, the money that you've spent, how much do you think that we, I, I guess it's just money basically set aside. If we did have a problem, what kind of money are you talking about, Tim?
I would say that probably, gosh, I'd have to go back and look, but I mean, it would be, you know, probably fifteen, twenty million dollars that we would have. Because we get, I think that fund generates about eighteen or nineteen million dollars a year in revenue that we have coming in. So, I mean, there's, there's constantly revenue flowing into that, into that fund as well.
But what you're talking, what we're borrowing and what you can put back to, to hold back, you're, you're going to have that set aside
Yes.
if something did happen?
Yes.
So, that, that gives us a little leverage.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Great. Thanks, everyone. All right. No vote required on this. So, I think we're ready to move on to the next item, which is the county manager's report. Mandy
So, Chairman and Commissioners and Representative Turner can speak to this. North Carolina has a relatively unique relationship under, under general statute with their counties, where counties actually are arms of the state and deliver specific services on behalf of the state. And one of those is public health. And I do want to note that while most of the services provided in public health are mandated or framed essential under the law, I more want to say what a significant impact they have on each and every one of our lives every day. And I asked Dr. Mullendorf, who is our community's medical director, to speak to some of those, some of the, give you a status report around public health services, and also asked Fletch to come, who is both your Veteran Services Director, but also your Preparedness Director, who's responsible for ensuring as a community, we're prepared for both man-made and natural disasters. So, I will note, Stoney Blevins is here, your HHS Director.
Thank you, Mandy. So, like she said, my name's Jennifer Mullendorf, I'm the Medical Director for Buncombe County Health and Human Services, and here to share a little bit about how public health is involved in preventing and responding to some of the common winter illnesses. So, all right, here we go. So, let's start with the illness that is probably at the top of everybody's mind, flu, right? So, flu activity is, in North Carolina is widespread and remained widespread for the week ending January twenty-seventh, which is the most recent week for which data is available. And this season, the main strain of the virus that we're seeing circulate is influenza A, H3N2. And that is being seen in North Carolina as well as across the U.S. And when we see that strain, as public health officials, we get worried because that is one of the more severe strains we have. And, and during those seasons when H3N2 is dominant, we see more severe illness, more hospitalizations, and more deaths. And typically, the hardest hit are going to be our older adults, so sixty-five years of age and older, and our young children. And so, this is some data that has come from the state. Again, it's, flu cases are not reportable to local public health, but flu-associated deaths are. And then we share that information with the state, who then passes that up to the CDC. And so, from the beginning of the flu season, which was October first of 2017, through the weekend in January twenty-seventh, there were ninety-five total flu-associated deaths in North Carolina. Three of those were children in the five to seventeen years of age range, and sixty-three of those were older adults. Again, seeing that the impact of this strain of flu tends to be on older adults. Locally, as of today, in Buncombe County, we've had eight flu-associated deaths. All were in adults, fifty years of age and older. And we're able to capture data that I, I think is more, what I hear from providers, like, were those people immunized? Did they have underlying health conditions? So, I can speak to that for our residents. So, five of those deaths occurred in people who were not immunized. And five of those deaths occurred in people who had underlying medical conditions. So, again, we, we see the, the age puts you at higher risk, being an older adult, and then having an underlying health condition puts you at risk. Last season, H3N2 was also the main strain that was circulating. And at the end of that flu season, there were two-hundred-and-nineteen deaths in North Carolina, including seven children. And over a hundred-and-fifty of those deaths were in older adults. We had thirteen deaths in Buncombe County last season. So, we're kind of on track to have a repeat of last year. And I, again, to get back at the immunization point, typical, typically in, in prior years, almost eighty-five percent of flu-associated deaths in children were in kids who were unvaccinated, which goes to, like, we're not using our number-one tool in the fight against flu. We're not getting people immunized. And so, that is our number-one goal in public health, right? Our, our number-one goal is prevention. And so, the one way, the number-one way we do that is through encouraging immunization. At Buncombe County Health and Human Services, we've given out over sixteen-hundred flu shots this season, which is comparable to where we were last year. And then we communicate, you know, we are pushing messages out prior to flu season, during flu season, to the public, encouraging vaccination, encourage the health habits to prevent contracting flu and prevent spread. I'm sharing information with local healthcare providers about how to, you know, diagnose, how to, how to manage flu cases. We get updates from the state on a regular basis, pushing that out. And then, we work closely with residential healthcare facilities in the state of North Carolina. These facilities, so long-term care facilities, adult care homes, short-term rehab facilities, are required to report to local public health if they have two or more staff or residents who test positive for flu. That meets the definition of an outbreak of a flu in those facilities. And so, our communicable disease nurses then speak with typically the Director of Nursing or the Infection Prevention Nurse at these facilities to assess the situation, to give them guidance on how to, how to control the outbreak in their facility. But early reporting to the local public health is critical to enable us to kind of get in there quick, make guidance, so that we can minimize cases and hopefully prevent deaths. And those communicable disease nurses are constantly, they're, they're checking in frequently with the facility, making sure that things are getting under control, or do they need additional guidance or support? Until that outbreak ends, they're following up with the facility. So far this flu season, we've had seven flu outbreaks in this type of facilities. Three occurred in December, four in January. Last year, the flu season, we had nine flu outbreaks in facilities, including four in March. So, I think people tend to think like, oh, we're getting out of, out of, out of the flu season. But remember, flu season can go until May. So, we're, we're hoping for our peak. We're not quite there yet, we don't think. The other group that we really work closely with are our schools. So, our school nurses, our childcare facilities, and our childcare consultants are very much our eyes and ears on the ground as well. They, they report to us about school absenteeism, if, what they're seeing in terms of symptoms in the students, so that we can support schools in helping to control flu. We can get messages out to parents. I saw one of our staff took a picture the other day. Her child goes to a local childcare, and there was our fact sheet in the parents folder to pick up. So, again, just trying to get messages out to people to promote how to prevent flu and control it. And then, I'm going to turn it over now to, to Fletch to kind of talk about another thing that we do in order to get prepared for potentially a flu pandemic.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm going to briefly discuss how we would actually respond to an influenza pandemic, how we would push that mass prophylaxis out to a large percentage of the community in a short period of time, and what kind of actions would prompt that response from us. So, we do that through our POD program, POD in this case being a point of dispensing. Those are predetermined locations geographically dispersed throughout the county, where I can send a team. We'd set up a center of operations to push that mass prophylaxis at a high rate to members of the community. Essentially, that can be initiated through two ways. One, at a local level, where we determine ourselves that our local medical facilities cannot meet the demands of the community, or down, top-down from a federal level, either from ASPER, the Assistant Secretary for Preparedness Response, through Center for Disease Control, through Activation of the Strategic National Stockpile, or through Public Health Preparedness and Response. So, how that works is we have seven locations determined throughout the community at our county and city high schools. We have these, as you see in the picture, these deployable POD boxes that come equipped with equipment and supplies. So, one of my response teams of twenty to thirty people can in a few hours set up this site at a cafeteria or gymnasium and start pushing that prophylaxis. In the case of a flu pandemic, where we're doing vaccines, we determine that our rate about, for an hour is about three-hundred people. So, one POD site in the course of twenty-four hours, once it's up to speed, we think we're going to vaccinate about seven-thousand people. And what this does for us, this program, is it helps us meet our Public Health Preparedness Core Capability Eight, which is medical countermeasure dispensing for the jurisdiction. And this falls under a Public Health All Hazards Base Plan. So, within this activation, we're going to use a couple of our annexes. Some examples of those are the High Consequence Pathogen Plan, our Medical Countermeasures Plan, and our Pandemic Flu Plan. A couple of weeks ago, on January twenty-sixth, we conducted our Second Annual Full-Scale POD Exercise in partnership with the UNC Eshelman School of Pharmacy at UNCA. We had about seventy participants representing our county Preparedness Team, my POD managers, our county epidemiology team, school nurses, some of our clinic staff, as well as twenty students from the UNCA School of Pharmacy. Started the morning with a didactic portion. We reviewed the history of pandemics. We're observing the hundred-year anniversary of the Spanish Flu this year. We talked about kind of how the flu itself shifts and drifts and migrates around the world. And then we had a deep dive into the operations of a POD. In the afternoon, we ran through several iterations of the POD vaccine scenario to maximize experience for everyone. It was a very successful day. We met our three goals, with the first of which was to familiarize the staff and students with what an emergency response would look like. Second, I was able to train my POD managers in the operations set up in logistics of a POD. And third of all, we were able to establish our baseline throughput for a vaccination-style POD, which I mentioned earlier was about three-hundred people per hour with a minimally staffed POD. This model we use for the influenza is also the same model we'd be pushing for any kind of public health emergency response, whether that's a shelter in response to a winter storm, radiological disaster, or perhaps even a chemical, biological terrorist attack. It's the same model we'd be pushing out. So, we're really happy with the way the exercise went. We're looking forward to continuing our partnership with UNCA into the future and maximize our capacity. Thanks.
All right. Switching gears a little, another common wintertime illness that public health addresses is norovirus, which may be called the stomach bug or incorrectly called the stomach flu. It's not the flu. And so, norovirus is really common between November and April. It's that acute abdominal pain, nausea, vomiting, that comes on fast and goes away within one to three days. And it is highly contagious and very hard to control because it can be resistant. It is resistant to many common disinfectants. So, while alcohol-based hand sanitizer is great for most things, it does not work for norovirus. So, hand washing, hand washing, hand washing. And because it is so contagious, it can easily rip through a child Um, and, um, because it is so contagious, it can easily rip through a childcare, a school, a, a long-term care facility. And as with flu, these residential healthcare facilities are required to report to us if they get, uh, two or more staff or residents who have noral-like, uh, illness. We, um, work with them, and, and this time, we will bring in often our environmental health staff who inspect these facilities. They are checking water temperature. They're checking the disinfectant strength that they're using to, again, try to control the outbreak. Um, and so, uh, our environmental health staff and our communicative disease nurses work in partnership to address norovirus. And then finally, what talk in Buncombe County would be complete without talking about pertussis? Uh, so although not specifically a winter illness, um, it's, um, it's on everybody's mind because of the recent, um, still ongoing Henderson County outbreak. Um, as of January twenty-fourth, there are up to ninety cases, thankfully seeing a downward trend, but, um, not quite over yet. Um, and amazingly, we have, um, not have any cases, uh, associated with that outbreak. Um, we've only had four cases since their outbreak started, none of which were connected to the Henderson County outbreak. Um, and, but early on in the outbreak, what we did was notify our local health providers, making sure they are aware that there is an outbreak in our, in our surroundings, uh, sending, um, information home to parents in schools where there was some coughing illness going around, saying if, if their kid has these symptoms, please get them to the doctor. Um, healthcare providers are required by state law to notify local public health when they have a suspected case of pertussis. And, um, our nurses jump on that, uh, conduct a very thorough investigation to determine, does this person meet case definition for pertussis, make sure they were appropriately treated, appropriately treated and, um, excluded from activities, and then, um, do, uh, contact investigation. Because pertussis is so contagious, we need to make sure that all household contacts and any high-risk close contacts get treated with medication to prevent their illness. Um, so, um, I would say that, uh, our, our communicative disease nurses, I, I think of them as like private investigators. They, um, really are great at, um, investigating things, getting to the bottom, and helping prevent spread. They work behind the scenes, um, which I think is one of those things public health often is sort of taken for granted because you don't always see what we do. Um, but we have really knowledgeable, dedicated staff who are out there every day, um, trying to protect the, uh, community's health. So, thank you, and, um, again, get vaccinated, wash your hands, and stay home when you're sick, which I think many of you have done, so I thank you for that.
All right. My doctor, you're repeating so much. Uh, I'm going to do the presentation. That was, that was perfect. Turn your mic over. You? All right. Next item is the ambulance service fee. Uh, and we have Jerry V. Han with us to, uh, explain the proposal.
Hey, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Uh, I'm asking today for an increase in our ambulance rates, and I'll give you the, the reasoning behind the increase. The last time that, uh, we had an increase was in two thousand and eleven. And the reason that we haven't asked for one since Medicare, who is the primary provider of reimbursement, uh, hadn't approved any more funding than what they did in two thousand and eleven. They recently approved an increase, a big increase of two percent. Uh, anyway, that affects what all the insurance company does. It affects what Medicaid does as well as Medicare. And you have before you, uh, what we're currently charging for different types of service that we provide, and, and we're asking to go up a hundred dollars across the board, with the exception of mileage, and mileage is going up, uh, not a hundred, not a hundred dollars, but, anyway, mileage will be going from eight seventy-five per mile up to ten dollars per mile. Uh, one other thing that's, that's going up, and this came about after Medicare increased two percent as of the first of the year, uh, where we go out and treat somebody, but we don't transport them. They decide that maybe they don't want to go to the hospital, or it could be maybe from an overdose, and we administer Narcan, and they recovering up to where they're not going to, uh, uh, they're, they think they're going to be okay, and we don't transport them. Previously, all we could collect was two hundred dollars for that, and we may expand much more in medications. Some of these medications we carry on ambulance are rather expensive. And a lot of times, we don't even recoup our costs, but here recently, like, during the latter part of January, Blue Cross was kind of the leader, and they decided, well, they would go up to as much as four hundred dollars reimbursement for a treatment, uh, before we didn't transport. So we're asking to go up to three, three hundred and seventy-five dollars. There's probably five percent of our calls that fall into that category. Oxygen use, you'll notice, is still the same, ten dollars. The reason for that, we can't collect any more than ten dollars. If we did, we did, if we charge more, we'd have to write off more, and that's the same as the reason we haven't been going up since two thousand and eleven. We billed out in FY twenty-seventeen just a little over ten million dollars, and during that period of time, we collected about five million dollars. We collected on almost seventy percent of the calls that we made, but we only got about half the money, and that's due to the tremendous amount of write-offs for various reasons. And anyway, we're asking, since we did finally get a little increase from Medicare, to where they will approve a little more, that we be allowed to go up, uh, basically a hundred dollars per call, a little bit on mileage and a treatment, no transport rate to go And with that, I'll entertain any questions.
How much were you, um, allowed to go up from?
Uh, we can go up any amount we want to. They don't say what it is. You just have to write more off because they only approve, uh, increase in what they approve, two percent.
So they just increased two percent?
They didn't, you know, so that's not a lot of increase.
That's not a lot, no.
That'll give us roughly about a hundred and sixty thousand dollars per year increase in revenue.
Doing, doing it this way, Jerry, is just, they're going to go up anyway, right? Whether you go up on the rate or not?
You, yeah, uh, yeah, Medicare's going, they've already approved that two percent.
Right. So they're going to go up anyway, so?
They're going to go up anyway, and the billing company that we use is recommended, and a lot of other counties are doing the same thing, that we go up, increase our, uh, rates a hundred dollars to try to recruit, recoup some of the calls.
If you leave it, if you leave your rate alone, that, then it turns out that we'd show possibly less loss?
Possibly.
Yeah. I can understand going up at, at points, but, you know, if they're going up at two percent, then, you know, that's two percent, you know, seven hundred to eight, ten is probably a little more than that, but we'll end up showing more loss next year, possibly.
Mm-hmm. So you're hoping by charging more, you're going to get more, basically? You're hoping it's going to stay at fifty percent?
With what?
You're hoping it's, the write-off's going to remain about the same?
Yeah.
Which means you'll get a, you'll get a bump next year?
And it may, they may even go up more in this current calendar year. They go up on calendar years, not necessarily fiscal years.
Can you just talk us through what the additional revenue would be used for, just so people can understand?
Be used to offset part of the cost of the service with, uh, personnel cost or medic, uh, medicine cost or supplies, you know, everything's gone up pretty good amount since two thousand and eleven.
And, and the, the service will still, I mean, this will not make it a revenue-neutral service. The county will still be subsidizing it, but just?
Will still be subsidizing.
It would require less subsidy than if we leave it where it's at right now?
Correct.
Does this, the insurance companies, let me say, if it's Blue Cross Blue Shield, do they pay quite a bit more than Medicare would?
In a lot of cases, they do.
So that's, that's a benefit?
Depending on what kind of plan somebody has.
Okay. But Medicare, Medicaid's locked in, so?
They're locked in on, they, they tell us, they give us a chart, here's how much we'll pay for a certain type of call.
Right, period, so, don't matter if it's a thousand dollars, you're just going to get X amount of dollars.
Correct.
Okay. And what about mileage, Jerry? What do they do on that?
We charge mileage, they pay so much on mileage also, and that's the reason we're going up from, uh?
Ten dollars?
Eight seventy-five to ten dollars.
Yeah, okay. Okay. All right, thank you.
Jerry, so everybody will understand, if it's, and I, I need to understand too, uh, if I'm a Medicare, you know, person, you, I called ambulance, it's eight hundred and ten dollars. How much does the county get from that?
We get approximately half of that.
Okay.
We'll collect across the board approximately fifty percent of what we actually bill with the time you have all of the write-offs.
Okay.
And just to be clear, nobody's ever denied a ride in the ambulance if they need it, just so we, everybody?
That's correct. You know, whether or not we collect anything or not?
Right.
We, we transport everybody.
Transport.
How much, if we approve the change, how much additional, um, revenue would it bring in that, thereby would offset that much subsidy?
About a hundred and sixty thousand dollars, somewhere in that neighborhood.
If we approve the, if we approve all the changes?
Correct.
Okay.
Do you know the percentage you pick up, uh, every year that you don't collect anything? I mean, it's?
It stays pretty much the same.
Fifty percent.
It doesn't vary that much, but I can get you some figures and?
Oh, that's the?
Go back and look at them for, say, five years or whatever you might want.
Okay, yeah.
Where, uh, across the state, where does this put us in line with counties our size?
I don't know, across the state, in the western part of the state, we're being lined with just about what everybody's charging, and that's pretty, it normally stays fairly close statewide, you know, but I'd have to look at it to, to be sure.
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Second.
All right, we've got a motion in a second. Why don't we go ahead and, um, take public comment, and then we'll bring it back to the board? Um, thank you very much, Mr. V. Han. Um, we will open this up for public comment. Are there any members of the public who would like to speak? Mr. Rice?
That was my understanding.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I find it just a little bit, uh, concerning that the director here has said that it usually stays the same on the cost, um, the no-shows getting in ambulance and coming to the hospital. If that's true, they've been a hype in this opioid thing to the point that it sounds like we've just run out of control with opioid pickups or not picking up. So if it stayed the same for five years or ten years, why would we, uh, be concerned about opioid pickups? Do you get what I'm saying? It must not be making any difference, in other words, on the picking-up cost on the opioid side if it stayed the same for all these years, on the ones that don't pay, or whatever. So it don't seem like there's a problem with opioid pickups. Am I, am I reading this wrong? Hmm, that's amazing, ain't it? Now, the other piece of the money is I heard that, uh, hospital was putting in money on these ambulances at one point, uh, either operational or money for the medicine or something. So is that money being taken out, and how much is it? And how's that getting to be put back, and is that part of having to raise this money, uh, up a little bit on all these services too? Okay.
All right, anyone else? Okay. Uh, yes, ma'am.
Monica Kreis from Candler. Um, so I've been very, very busy since you guys have last seen me, um, at the end of November. Shortly after that, I did a cleanup at the heart of Candler, as Mr. John Sutton calls it, uh, with two Inca High School girls. We cleaned up that whole corner. Everyone was complaining about it, and we went out and did something about it. We also posed a, um, kind of a invitation to Candler, and above the graffiti, we wrote, "This could be art." Now, since then, it's about two months later, the Shell Station, um, the station itself has no new graffiti. The whole graffiti that we challenged is now this beautiful piece of artwork. I don't know what it says, but it's pretty to look at, more than it was before, and the trash buildup is at a minimal. This one random act with no funds and two high school girls made a positive impact, and it definitely changed a lot of people in Candler, just one evening. Now, after that, you guys, uh, opened up the Library Board of Trustees, which, uh, I'm looking up that definition. Basically, what I'm summing up is the Library Board of Trustees is someone that you trust to, uh, help handle the funds. You also awarded three hundred thousand dollars to the Inca Candler Library. Why does no one know about this? This is an amazing thing to come to Inca Candler, and I'm excited, just like at the opioid epidemic, the town hall that I went to, and I got to see all of you, except Ms. Frere, Mr. Browning. Um, it's a beautiful thing coming to Candler, and more people need to know about it. And I know that there are a lot of applicants. But in my professional way of saying, gimme, gimme, please, 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 I know that you guys can trust me for that three hundred thousand dollars to give resources to Candler. If I did it with no money, something the whole town was complaining about, imagine what myself and all these volunteers that are coming with me, the army behind me in Candler, imagine what good we can do for that. And I don't know if you know my original stance with all of it. It comes back to the opioid epidemic. It may sound like graffiti, it may sound like, uh, resources or buses or this, that, and the third, but it all comes back to curbing the opioid epidemic. I know that you guys can trust me to give the respect to our community, to you guys, to be, uh, what was another one? I'm telling you, you guys do a lot around here, so much. I've been trying to follow. I've seen each of you Commissioners that's something different, whether it's a Democratic kickoff, which, I was myself the first person to register to vote in twenty-eight years, first time in twenty-eight years in Buncombe County, I was the first one, because I finally found out what you guys do. You make a difference, and as corny as it sounds, and as politician as I may sound, as my daddy calls me, you know, if we want to make a difference, we have to vote. We have to vote, we have to get out there, and I've been doing my best to spread the word, and it's spread the word, you know, um, everything that I could do to help curb it. I hate that buzzer.
Thank you very much.
I would love questions, please, please, please. Any questions, I would be more than happy.
We're not going to do that right now.
Okay.
All right. Um, anybody else? All right, bring it back to the board. Yes, Mr. Frere?
Anybody else on the side of the ambulance?
Yeah, I, I don't think, doesn't sound like there are. Anybody else want to speak on the ambulance item? All right. All right, Commissioners, we've got a motion and a second further discussion. Um, all right, um, I'll just make a comment. You know, my only comment is, um, you know, I think I'm going to support the motion. My hope is that in the future, we would maybe do, these are pretty, pretty big increases, but, but on the other hand, we haven't done any since two thousand and eleven. So my hope maybe going forward is we do kind of maybe more frequent, but smaller. Um, anyways, it's my comment, but I'll, I'll support, I'll support the motion.
So I'm going to, I'm going to comment since, uh, the chair has to. I think, you know, I think that's not a, not a, not a, I'm going to support it also, but that's not a bad idea, that, you know, as we look forward and everything, we might, you know, want to, um, look out over the next five years or ten years, you know, at this, and, um, and not have to catch up, you know, just try to, try to keep up with what we, what we need to.
I think that's a really good suggestion. Um, I'd make the clarification that, like any other healthcare provider, we can only bill what the covered entities allowed us. Medicare, Medicaid, and Blue Cross Blue Shield are the only things available. And to Mr. Rice's point, I don't think Mr. V. Han was saying we're not seeing more people. He's saying the percentage of uncovered individuals?
Oh, yeah.
Remains the same.
Right.
Um, so Medicare has raised the rate, and if Buncombe doesn't raise the rate, it prevents us from asking Medicare to reimburse at the rate for that service that every other ambulance in the country now has the opportunity to do for those.
Right.
But I would agree with you.
Thank you.
We were, um, a little bit confused even how to bring a rate increase to you all-around ambulances because we'd never seen one, so, um, I hear your point, Chairman. Good point.
Okay. Any, anybody? Uh, Mr. Frere?
Back to that.
Back to that, the rate, uh, if, if the rate is four hundred dollars and they raise it to five hundred, then we go to eight hundred, we're still above the rate. Is it saying that if their rate was four hundred and we was at five hundred, they went to five hundred, would they, they'd still be paying us, they're not, we're not going out of that rate at all?
Um, what is in front of you are the Medicare-approved rates. They're not above the Medicare-approved rates.
No, we don't get to eight hundred dollars.
But in, with any insurance claim, you're not gonna get the full amount because their administrative fees, there are lot, you know, some claims that are denied, so, um, you're never, I mean, that's typical to the delivery of the service that you're not gonna get the full amount.
Well, I understand that, but it is, is the question that I asked Jerry, if we didn't go up on the rates and we got to two percent, which is not a lot, then we would still be getting the same amount of money for the ambulance run. If two percent would go up two percent.
If you don't adopt the rate increase, Jerry can't charge Medicare the new rate.
I agree with that one then, there you go, that's all I need to hear.
He should jump up if I'm wrong, but I think that's pretty clear.
Okay, alright, alright, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, thank you very much, Mr. Vihon, for talking us through that issue. Alright.
There you go.
Alright, very good. Alright, commission, uh, the next item are the board appointments, so let's, um, walk through those. We've got, let's just, let's just take them as they appear in our packet, can we do that? Does everybody have that?
Yes.
Okay, uh, the first one is the Historic Resources Commission. There's two vacancies, we have one.
I'll nominate Valerie Watson.
I'd second that, if I needed to.
Alright, all, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, then we've got the two board of adjustments, um, areas. One is for the Asheville Board of Adjustments, and, um, we have two applicants. We were talking earlier about whether to go ahead and make the decision on that this evening or to do interviews. So, let's just, let's just, um, majority rule here, I'd like to just kinda go through, and if you'd like to interview, let's, let's say interview. If a majority already knows what you want to do, then we'll just vote, but, uh, let's, let's just...
Interview, and, and I feel strongly about that because I don't know either of these people, and it's such an important board.
Okay. Commissioner White says what you're...
Interview, because one, I don't know, and I think only Paddy will make the decision.
Okay.
Uh, I, I would vote on those since there's only, only two.
Okay, I, I'd prefer to interview.
Vote.
Alright, it sounds like we're gonna, we'll, we'll interview those. Alright, and, um, then on the county board of vacancies, where there's a bigger pool of vacancies and there's, um, uh, our applicants and there's two vacancies, so, I think we're gonna interview for those as well.
Yes.
Alright, alright, um, we have one vacancy on MSD.
Yeah, get up there.
Alright, I'll nominate Jim Holland.
Second.
I second.
Alright, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, thank you for serving with that important board, Mr. Holland. Alright, the, um, there's vacancies on the Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee, there's seven vacancies, we've got two current applicants.
I'll nominate Rod Nelson and Annie Minx, and bless them for being willing to serve, because we can never find people.
It's hard.
Alright, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Alright, I think that gets us through all of the boards we need to address this evening.
Library board.
Library.
Library, libraries, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Six pages.
Alright, so, um, there's been some, there's been a proposal that, uh, Mr. Holland would work, we have a big pool of applicants here, a lot of interest in the new library board. So there's been a suggestion that they work to, uh, identify the geographic diversity of all the applicants and bring back kind of a smaller pool of, uh, candidates, which the board would then interview and make selections on, um, which would be geographically representative of our library system and the county. And Mr. Holland emphasized that if there's any applicants that you, you really, really want to make sure we interview to let him know, and, and in that way, those folks will definitely get an interview. So, are folks comfortable with that process, or this, just in light of how many applicants we have?
And then maybe if...
How many are you thinking?
We've got down to eight.
We've got five, five spots, right, that need to be filled?
There's twenty-six total on this list, which is really good. I mean, you know, we don't, we usually don't get that kind of a response, so I don't know, I don't know the eights, and it, I mean...
There are several ways that you could do that if you wanted, because, uh, the applicants, you have one from each district, and then you have two at large. You could, uh, interview if you wanted by district, you could certainly do that and break that down, uh, and, uh, it's really up to your pleasure as to how, what's the most effective way to...
I know, I know we're, we're, we're here by districts, but I always worry on a commission level to, um, be that specific to districts in the sense that we're all Buncombe County commissioners, does that make sense? So I think if we could, you know, not, I mean, I can see representation from each district, but, um, interview, get to a number and interview based on that. You know, like if you had at least two from every district and then sent them our way.
I mean, just glancing, I, I think you could just about do three from each district. There's a lot of, and they're, and they're spread out all over the county.
Sure.
We're talking about interviewing now, right?
Yeah.
That's what we're talking about, interviewing.
So if they sort through the twenty-six and then, you know...
So that would be nine, and then how many at large?
Two, you have two at large.
So if we did it that way, then you'd interview twelve. Do three at large and three per district.
Well, we don't necessarily have to have more for the at-large because they can come from any of the districts, so if we interviewed three from each district, we'd have nine people, and each district would get covered, and then whoever else rises to the top would also get selected.
Yeah.
So, when we say like, you know, why don't we say like at least two or three from each district, and we're looking at somewhere between eight and ten, somewhere in that, somewhere in that range is kind of to shoot for that. And again, if there's anybody you really want to make sure we interview, just let, let them know and we'll, we'll interview them.
I think you had one come tonight and ask you, probably you might want to interview her. Yes, we did.
Sure, okay.
Sure did, you did.
Any other comments on this? We, we, everybody think this is a good, we're gonna move forward?
So did we come up with a number?
Eight to ten?
Eight to ten?
Yeah, yeah. Alright, are you good, Mr. Holland?
Absolutely.
Okay, alright.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Alright, the next item on our agenda is public comment, um, and folks are welcome to come talk to us about any items that we, unless we've already, uh, talked about it specifically earlier in the meeting. Are there any folks who'd like to comment? Yes, sir, come on up.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and, uh, commissioners, my name's Michael Harney, and, uh, I am a co-founder and operator of what we call the Needle Exchange Program of Asheville. It currently operates out of the office of the Western North Carolina AIDS Project. I also teach Spanish at AB Tech and at Blue Ridge Community College. So last week, uh, last Tuesday night, and some of you were not there, I hope you're feeling better, Commissioner Belcher asked us to come to the three-minute, uh, opportunity to speak before you and to maybe even educate you on some of the issues around the community. In, uh, the early days of the Needle Exchange Program, if we, we ever exchanged a thousand needles in a whole year, we thought we were pretty hot snot, to be honest, and, uh, last year, went through about four hundred and eighteen thousand needles, and the year before that, in two thousand and sixteen, we did five hundred and twelve thousand needles. So I brought a packet of information to you, uh, Commissioner Belcher, and that's for your education in it. You'll find a letter from the governor. We had, um, the Deputy Secretary of Health and Services, Mark Benton, come in December and speak to us and listen to us and hear our concerns. The Western North Carolina AIDS Project serves an eighteen-county region, and yet we had people reporting coming from thirty-two counties and four states for access to clean needles. I am asking you to really consider becoming the model to the state of North Carolina. Early in the, uh, in the years when Nathan Ramsey was the board chair, and when George Bond was the health director, the health board, the Buncombe County Health Board, had a resolution in support of needle exchange. Asheville's been very supportive all over the years, and this has been a great location to be a model for our state. I'm hoping that you will consider tonight making some comments in support of actually operating needle exchange out of our county health department. I would like to see actually that all eighty-five county health departments across the state take this up. The Needle Exchange Program of Asheville spent about fifty thousand dollars, um, supplying needles for all the counties and people that have come from these counties, so it's not that you would have to support that many people, but if we could spread this so that at least all eighteen to twenty counties of Western North Carolina would have, uh, you know, maybe five thousand needles or ten thousand needles or however many, it would really reduce the burden to us locally. It would keep people back home where they might not have to drive long distances to get the access. They could find access to, uh, medical care, to safe disposal in the health department, maybe testing for HIV hepatitis, maybe a counselor, all the things that may be available. I would like to hear tonight that you all, each of you, support having the county health department operate needle exchange out of it, and how we can work that out, maybe with the medical director and other health directors in our community. I know Nancy, uh, Yancey County, uh, Diane Cook, I believe is her name, is the health director there, is really looking into it, and there are other counties across the state doing the same. Um, I'm open to any questions that you have. I hope the packet will be of interest to you. It was, um, House Bill nine seven-two that legalized needle exchange in two thousand and sixteen, and House Bill two forty-three in two thousand and seventeen amended the verbiage that no public funds could be used, but no state funds instead could not be used. That opens it up to county and city. So thank you very much. May I leave this for you, Commissioner?
Uh, yes, sir.
Leave it for all of us.
You can present...
Yeah, I leave it for everybody over here, yeah.
Or Jim, or Kathy, either way, and thank you for, uh, thank you for the information.
Yeah, the invite, the invite was so you could provide information to us so that we could, you know, make decisions as we move, as we move forward. We won't be making any decisions tonight, but, uh, again, I appreciate you coming, encourage everyone to come and give us their comments, get three, three minutes when you can, so...
Alright, thank you. Uh, are there any other members of the public that would like to speak this evening? Um, okay. Well, we don't know what she's gonna say, so...
Twice in one night, I feel special. Um, speaking on the syringe exchange program, um, you know, unfortunately, this day and age, we have to accept that syringes are out, that is part of what I do. Personally trained myself and the students that I go out with, it's, it's on the streets, it's everywhere, what this man speaks is the truth. I've never personally chosen that route, but there are others who don't have that support structure. But what I will say, if you don't support wholly what this man has to say, then there definitely needs to be some, some give and take on spreading the awareness, spreading, spreading knowledge. Mountain Energy, uh, in Canler, Booms Corner, I know, Mr. Belcher, I know you know where that is, well, that's my corner. Mountain Energy was my first job resource. I love those people, they give me apple strudels, you know, they are great people. Well, they have such a needle problem that they had to get the biohazard bins. I'll go on there, check on my people, why is it that nobody knows who to get to come get these syringes? By nobody, I mean, I personally got on the phone for over half an hour. I called the fire stations, I called APD, I called whomever I thought could help guide me to how we could get this full bin of syringes picked up, and an empty one in its place because we are in the middle of an opioid epidemic, unfortunately. And the syringe exchange, that's who we need to contact, and it, take it upon myself to go and spread that knowledge. It definitely is still a barrier between, um, what we think people should do and what we want them to do, and I, I have, I give you my hundred percent support because that's the day and age we unfortunately live in, but there has to be some give and take everywhere. Thank you.
Thank you. Alrights. Uh, Mr. Rice?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Okay, Jim Holland up here, ought to recognize him, he's on the Valley Health Board, and he made a motion to do something, they accepted, how about that? That's getting unusual on the Valley Health Board, by the way, Jim. We have to laugh about that one because he did a great job, uh, opening up to, uh, public. I want to appreciate you all opening this thing up for an interview on this, uh, uh, these two candidates. I want to open your mind, if you don't know, that, uh, the Inca Partners in Inca on the ball field out there is one of the owners that you're looking at on, uh, the interview, and his name is Bill Newman. He also served in two thousand and six on the planning board for the county, and he, him and his partners were the one that developed and all this property out there at the time that he is on the board, and there's a big article in Mountain Express about this, why was the planning board overloaded with developers? This man should not be put on the board, in my opinion, because he's already served on board. We are re, we, there's a lot of good applicants out here. We don't have to repeat. They're in a big building project around Inca Lake, and that place is out there with his kinds of business and his business, so, uh, I think it'd be a conflict of interest, in my opinion. So, that's, that's, that's fair. Now, the opioid crisis, I want you to focus on something. You need some really good help here with Valley Health, maybe, I don't know whether they're the one good or not, but you've got good staff to look in to what we call the substance abuse. Substance abuse has been a big issue with school kids for years. It's been swept under the rug, it's been not even funded or underfunded, and substance abuse is a big, big leader in where they're headed into opioid. Now, if you don't address the biggest issue with substance abuse, what do you think opioid is looking like? So I think that the focus should be around the biggest population of people. Opioid is not the biggest population of people, substance abuse is. That's what we heard from the doctor today downstairs. We've heard it all through these years about substance abuse. Now, uh, Valley Health has never been funding the substance abuse, the state hasn't funded it, and we're not funding it. Let's talk about the biggest issue, substance abuse. Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, anyone else? Yes, sir.
Good evening, my name is Colin Van Etten, I'm a resident of the Flat Creek area in North Buncombe County, and I'm also a Buncombe County employee. Let's back up about three years in your mind. On March ninth, twenty fifteen, I relayed a concern to the Parks and Recreation Director showing that the county was in violation of state law regarding its ordinance on chapters fifty dash four and fifty-four dash ten, and the illegal posting of signage within county parks. Within four days of sending that email, I received a verbal and written reprimand from my manager, followed by an emailed acknowledgement of such, labeling my concern for the county's illegal posting of parks as, quote, "The use of funds, supplies, or equipment of the county for political or partisan purposes." Let me just be really clear, letting the county know that it is violating a law is neither political nor partisan. On October third, as you all know, the county updated its personnel ordinance regarding retaliation. So on October fourth, I resubmitted that same request, quote, "In an effort that the aforementioned ordinances and county-wide signage be changed to bring the county back into legal compliance. I ask that the concerns originally brought forth in March of twenty fifteen be addressed swiftly and appropriately. I'm willing and able to discuss this issue with whomever requests my presence or involvement in this matter." Well, that was four months ago, on October fourth. Today, we're at February fifth. So, February fifth today, letter to my manager. Please accept this letter as formal notice of my intent to resign from my position as communications specialist within Buncombe County Information Technology. My last day in this position will be Friday, February ninth, twenty eighteen. I had allowed enough time for this meeting to see if that was ever gonna get on the agenda three years down the road. Decision was not an easy one, as I'm truly grateful that for the opportunity, I've had to work within the IT department and serve the citizens of Buncombe County over the last three and a half years. Leaving behind the wonderful staff of BCIT will be difficult, as you're all terrific employees, and I'm certain your service to the county will continue henceforth. However, during my leave, I've found that the... However, during my leave, I've found that the illegal county ordinances I first brought to the county administration in 2015 have yet to be corrected. And Buncombe County remains in blatant violation of state law to this day. As a Buncombe County employee, paid by the citizens of this county and entrusted with the appropriate spending of our citizens' tax dollars, I can no longer sit by idly and be part of an organization that both refuses to comply with statutory law and reprimands its employees for bringing forth such concerns when it is in the administration's best interest to follow the law. If we, Buncombe County, require our citizens to follow established ordinances and laws."
Your time is up.
"We should certainly hold ourselves to at least the same standard."
Sir, I'm asking you to stop. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions for the board, I'll gladly answer them.
Thank you. All right. Anyone else? All right, public comment is over. There's no one else who wants to speak? Jerry's already spoken. All right, I've got a couple of announcements. On February 13th at 10:00 a.m., the Board of Commissioners will hold a special closed session to review direct report employees in room 326 at 200 College Street. On February 13th at 12:30 p.m., the Board of Commissioners will hold a workshop to discuss the FY19 budget in the first floor conference room at 200 College Street. On February 20th at 5:00 p.m., will be the next regular Board of Commission meeting in room 326 at 200 College Street in downtown Asheville. Is there any need for a closed session this evening?
No, sir.
Mr. Frew or Ms. Stone? All right. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, we're adjourned. Thank you.